Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December the 10th Salisbury City Council Meeting. Excuse me. I may lose my voice during this bench. The deputy chief's fault. But if I do, Mr. Boda will be happy to carry on, but I'll go as long as I can. I would ask you all to please silence any electronic devices that you have, and if you have to make a phone call, we ask that you exit the chamber and do it in the hallway. If for some reason an emergency should arise during the meeting, please exit in an orderly manner. Thank you. And make a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. If that exit for some reason is blocked, please make -- exit the room, make a left and then a right, and go down the stairs. Please do not use the elevators in case there's an emergency. If you need special assistance, please ask, and we'll be glad to provide it to you. God bless you. At this -- this is going to be -- I can tell this meeting is going to be unique. At this time, I'll ask Pastor Greg Carlson from Parks Seventh Day at Adventist Church to come to the podium for the invocation, please.
Thank you for the privilege of being here and praying for this fine board. I hope your voice is fine. I didn't realize it was Christmas sweater night. I didn't --
Yes, I'm sorry to say it is.
Yeah. And, you know, I've been here several times, and it's usually the board and one or two people, so this is good. Look, Bowery. Father in heaven, I thank you for the privilege of being here tonight to pray for this council meeting, Lord. I pray that your blessing would be upon the great city of Salisbury, upon these men and women who make the decisions that keeps this city safe and prosperous. I thank you for our first responders that we see in the room tonight, Lord. We ask that your protection would be over our firemen, our EMTs, our policemen, and all the city workers, Lord, as they serve our community. Lord, as we know in your word, there's wisdom in a multitude of counselors, and I thank you for each counselor that's here tonight, and I pray that your wisdom would be heard as they make the decisions. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please rise now and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, good evening.
Good evening.
We have some presentations.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So recently, we had the City of Salisbury Holiday Party. And at that fine event, we were able to bestow some awards on a few of our first responders who showed bravery and helped a citizen in need. And for those that were there, we were able to honor their service. For those who are not there, we're going to be doing that in the future. But I'd like to call now the Fire Chief, John Toll, to come forward to talk a little bit about the circumstances of the incident upon which -- or for which we honored those members of our service, because there were a number of other people who deserve recognition. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council President, and members of council. Good evening. We're here tonight to talk about the importance of cardio-pulmonary resuscitation, or CPR, and in recognizing several civilian members that -- and members of the department for their actions and outstanding efforts in providing service to the community. Before we start, let's talk a little bit about CPR and why it's important. According to the American Heart Association, when listed as the underlying cause of death, cardiovascular disease accounts for nearly 837,000 deaths in the U.S. That's one out of every three deaths. Cardiovascular disease is leading global cause of death accounting for more than 17 million per year, a number that is expected to grow to more than 23 million by 2030. About 2,300 Americans die of cardiovascular disease each day, an average of one death every 38 seconds. So it's the leading cause of deaths attributed to cardiovascular disease, followed by stroke, heart failure, high blood pressure, and other cardiovascular diseases. So every year, more than 350,000 people experience sudden cardiac arrest, or when the heart stops beating without warning. Ninety-two percent of them die before reaching the hospital. Statistics prove that if more people knew CPR, more lives could be saved. Immediate CPR and access to an AED can double or even triple a victim's chance for just survival. So tonight is a great night for us, because we get to celebrate a success. All right? And that success is Mr. Richard Gooden is here with us today because of the actions of not only the civilians, but our department. So on October 28, 2018, the Fire Department was dispatched to the YMCA for a subject fall. All right? That's how the call came in, as a subject fall. Upon arrival of our EMS staff, they were met at the door advising that the patient was having a heart attack and had gone into cardiac arrest. When the EMS crew arrived at the patient's side, they found the patient lying on the floor with CPR being performed by civilian bystanders. The patient had been shot once by an AED and oxygen was being administered. Fire Department personnel assumed patient care and continued high-performance CPR efforts. Once the patient was connected to the cardiac monitor, another shock was performed. At this time, the patient was found to have a return of spontaneous circulation and was transported to PRMC. Upon arrival at PRMC, the patient was conscious and talking, and was immediately taken to the CAF lab, where he was released from PRMC a few days later. If it was not for the quick recognition and prompt actions of Dr. Andreas Kovacs, Mariah Neves, Eric Brumberg, Megan Evans, and Fire Department members, Lieutenant Brian Lewis, firefighter paramedic Tom Moore, firefighter paramedic Matt McCormick, firefighter EMT Mike Osman, firefighter EMT David Hoster, and firefighter EMT Cameron Chance, the outcome could have had a very different outcome. So on behalf of the department, it's my honor to present each of them with the City of Salisbury Fire Department CPR Award in recognition of aiding in the saving of a life by initiating or performing CPR on a patient, and the American Heart Association's Heart Savers Hero Award in recognition of advancing the mission of the American Heart Association and emergency cardiovascular care through a courageous act in the effort to save a life. So can we have Dr. Andreas Kovacs, Mariah Neves, Eric Brumberg, Megan Evans, Lieutenant Brian Lewis, firefighter paramedic Matt McCormick, and firefighter EMT David Hoster please come forward.
You guys are good.
Have you shot two?
Yep.
All right.
Let me sit.
Eric?
It should be two.
Yeah.
Mariah?
Yeah.
Spell that for me.
Actually, Mr. Gooden, come on up.
Yeah. Mr. Gooden?
This is good.
Come on up.
Here we go, one, three. One, two, and three.
Once again, congratulations to everyone involved. Mr. Gooden, it's great to see you.
It's great to be here.
Amen.
Just for the public's edification, I would encourage everybody, if you work in an establishment that doesn't have an AED, talk to your HR people and encourage them to get one. They're easy to use. You follow -- actually, they tell you what to do, and they save lives, so. And before we proceed any further, I'd like to recognize who snuck in. Delegate Carl Anderton, good to see you. Okay. I think I'm okay. We're going to keep going. I want to take a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Rudisil.
Mr. President, I'd like to make an amendment to the legislative agenda.
I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain in a second. I have a motion for Mr. Boda to modify the agenda to add Resolution Number 2896 to purchase improved real property located at 610 Pearl Street from Renia Ventura for rehabilitation and returns to the city tax rolls to the legislative agenda immediately after Resolution 2895. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Jackson. Will vote on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We'll now vote on the motion to adopt the legislative agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the November 13 council meeting minutes and closed session minutes, November 26 council meeting minutes, Resolution Number 2886 approving the appointment of Dr. Bronte C. DeShiel to the Parks and Recreation Committee for term ending December 2021, Resolution Number 2887 approving the reappointment of Lee Beecham to the Salisbury Zoo Commission for term ending December 2021, Resolution Number 2888 approving the reappointment of Ronald G. Alessi, Sr. to the Salisbury Zoo Commission for term ending December 2023, Resolution Number 2891 approving the reappointment of Timothy Mayer to the Disability Advisory Committee for term ending December 2021, Resolution Number 2892 declaring that Pure Fitness LLC is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for their property located at 600 Glen Avenue in Salisbury, Maryland, Resolution Number 2893 authorizing an amendment to Resolution Number 2831 to amend wording error -- a wording error, and that's it.
Any questions or comments? Hearing that, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to recognize those individuals who are here who have been appointed to the various committees and thank them for their service. Dr. Bronte DeShiel, I know she's here. Lee Beecham. Lee's not here. Ron Alessi, I don't see Ron. Chip DeShiel, I don't see Chip. Gene Mears. Okay. And Tim is not here. Tim, no. Okay. Thank you for your service, and we really appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Okay. I'll give it to Mr. Boda and a second to Mr. Rudisil. How's that? Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening. We have two items this evening. The first is the award of bid for Invitation to Bid A-19-106. That's the Waverly Drive cycle track and citywide street striping. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit bids for all labor, materials, and equipment necessary to perform street traffic striping on Waverly Drive, with two additional pricing schedules requested to establish rates for similar street striping work throughout the city. For example, work that would be 1,500 linear feet or more, work that would be 1,500 linear feet or less. This award would be a requirements contract. While the city has attempted to identify the estimated amounts of each bid item to cover its requirements, the quantity of work ordered may be different than that submitted for bidding. No minimum purchase was implied or guaranteed. Thereby, the city reserves the right to decrease or increase the quantities acknowledged in the solicitation document, and these modifications won't constitute a change order. Additionally, the solicitation included a contract extension clause. This provides the city with the option to renew all or portions of this contract with the same terms and conditions as the original contract for two one-year terms contingent upon sufficient budget appropriations and mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. The Department of Procurement followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times and posting the solicitation on both the City of Salisbury's procurement portal and on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. Two vendors submitted bids by the due date and time of November 28, 2018, 2:30 p.m. The first bid was from Zone Striping Incorporated for $1,263,048.50, and the second bid was from Mid-Atlantic Marking for $1,640,905. Both vendors were deemed responsive and responsible, and the Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award this contract to Zone Striping Incorporated from Glassboro, New Jersey, with subsequent annual renewals processed by the Department of Procurement. Purchase orders for specific tasks will be issued as needed based on available funding.
Any questions? None? Mrs. Miller, go ahead.
Okay. The next item is award of bid for Contract Invit ITB 19-112, a dump truck. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Field Operations to purchase a dump truck, which is a cab, chassis, and body, through Baylor Incorporated, doing business as International of Delmarva, utilizing a cooperative purchasing contract issued by the state of Delaware. Per Section SC 16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding: Exceptions of the City of Salisbury Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the City of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance: contracts in which the city receives a price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. This charter designation, therefore, allows the City of Salisbury to participate in competitive solicitations issued and awarded by other governmental entities, such as the state of Delaware. Contract GSS-16617, Heavy Duty Trucks, was issued as a request for proposals on February 23, 2016, by the state of Delaware, for the purpose of identifying a vendor and executing a contract to purchase multiple types of heavy-duty trucks. As a publicly competed contract, this contract was then made available for use by other states and governmental entities through a participating addendum. After verifying the contract pricing, terms, and conditions, the City of Salisbury Department of Procurement sought and received approval from the state of Delaware, Director of Government Support Services, to participate in the aforementioned contract. There are sufficient funds in the account noted in your packet, which is the Streets/vehicles account, to purchase the requested truck. The procurement department requests council's approval to award this contract to International of Delmarva in the amount of $134,595.
Any questions? Okay. Hearing that, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Miller. At this time, we'll have a presentation of our FY '18 audit and financial statements. Mr. Sawyer, Timothy Sawyer of Barbequain and Thornton &amp; Company, will be accompanied up by -- you're not going to come up? Mr. Corddry will join.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Sawyer. I'm the audit partner at Barbequain Thornton &amp; Company in charge of your audit. Probably some of you remember Pam Baker, who is now our managing partner. So she's moved up in the world, and I am now taking over on your engagement. I have actually been on the audit here for the last five years in various capacities, and now I'm your audit partner. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the audit, so everybody has two documents in front of you. The thicker one is the actual financial statement audit. The smaller one is your single audit, which is required because of your federal expenditures during the year. With the audit, we've issued what is called an unmodified or clean audit opinion, so that means that your statements do present fairly your financial position and results for the year. Mentioning in that as well, there is an emphasis of matter paragraph in your report, because there was a new governmental accounting standard that was required to be implemented this year, and that was implemented, and it is included in your financial statements. Also, with the part of the audit, we do take a look at your internal control cycles. We look at payroll, cash disbursements, and your cash receipts or billing. This year, we tested a sample of water and sewer billing, as well as a sample of payroll transactions, and found that your internal controls were operating as designed and are effective. And then with your cash disbursements, we did a test last year on those, so we updated and made sure that the controls were still operating as they were designated last year by doing what we call a walkthrough, where we look at just a couple of transactions smaller in scope than the actual sample. But all your internal controls are working as they are designed to. With the single audit, that looks at your compliance related to your federal expenditures, and we also found with that piece of the audit that you had no compliance issues related to your federal expenditures, so you've also got an unmodified or clean audit opinion related to your federal expenditures for the year. Just to point out a couple of highlights regarding for the city, for the -- located on your statement of net position, if you want to look later, your total cash and investment pool balances for 2018 were $48.1 million compared to $46.6 million the year before, so you're up about $1.5, $1.6 million. It's about a 3.34% increase. Now, that encompasses everything, so that's your governmental activities, as well as the water and the sewer, and part of the audit also focused on with that is you had a lot of capital projects going on last year. So your next big balance that we show was your capital assets on the statements. Net of depreciation, you had $188.7 million compared to $174.3 million, so you added $14.4 million in capital assets. So you had a lot of construction going on. It was a kind of a major point of what we focused on as part of the audit related to the risk for there. Now, some of that was, obviously, the cash balances were up, because you've taken on raising some of the cash to self-fund these projects as opposed to additional borrowing. But your bonds, notes, and capital leases payable went to $106 million from $100 million point five last year, so you're up about 5.4. But considering the amount of capital projects you did, not having to borrow all that money was good. Your total net position for the year is $83.7 million compared to $73.1, so you're up about $10 million in net position.
More federal insurance benefits for that.
So you've raised that, went up about 14%. So again, another good increase. And when you're looking at your net position, kind of comparing with some of the new standards that have gone into effect over the last year, you still have positive net position, which for a lot of governments, a lot of governments within these new standards that have gone in are now in net deficit positions on the government-wide statements. So you're in good position there as far as having actual positive net position. The fund level, which the difference between your fund level and your government-wide is your fund-level statements do not reflect capital assets or debt on your balance sheet. Those are expenditures of revenue, depending which way they're going, like for the debt. If you issue new debts, a revenue, obviously, your payments for debt are expenditures, and any purchases of capital assets are expenditures. But when we look at the fund level, everybody looks at fund balance, which is basically your accumulated reserves over the years. So you went from $18 million last year to $19 million this year, so you're up about $1 million. So that is good there. And your unassigned fund balance, which is the piece that hasn't been kind of broken out for either capital projects or some other designated purpose, went from $6.6 up to $7.4 million, so you're up about $800,000 there, and that's the portion that's allowed or in reserve that the city has to use for whatever purpose it needs to as it's going forward. So all in all, very clean audit, had full cooperation from Keith and his staff, so fairly smoothly. And if anybody has any questions?
I might, if you'll just give me one second. As I thought. You had mentioned that the fund balance for a lot of cities was impacted because of some of the changes in the way that its reporting was. Is that correct?
It was the net position on your government-wide statements.
Do we have any idea what would have -- so we're not comparing really apples to apples year over year, or were the changes prior to that last year?
Well, you had the -- the two big ones were the pension one, which was four years ago, and then the accounting for post-employment benefits, which was the one that went in this year.
Okay.
The pension one was the big one four years ago. The other post-employment benefits, everybody's kind of been picking up a piece of that over the last several years, so the impact wasn't as significant as the pension one a few years ago.
Okay. That's the only question I have. Questions? It's a clean audit, which is really, really nice. I'm trying to think, when I had clean audit in my businesses, but I had one, I think. But I think what this goes to show is that over -- and I've seen it since I've been on the council. The improvements in the systems has been phenomenal in the last three years, and that applies also to the budget presentations, which we're about to get into. So I think that Mr. Cordry and his staff certainly have a lot to do with how clean this is, and I applaud him for doing that, and please let your staff know that it's appreciated by the council.
Mr. President, can I just join you for a second?
Sure.
It's not --
So you're in good position there as far as having actual positive net position. The fund level, which the difference between your fund level and your government-wide is your fund-level statements do not reflect capital assets or debt on your balance sheet. Those are expenditures of revenue, depending which way they're going. Like for the debt, if you issue new debts, revenue, obviously, your payments for debt are expenditures, and any purchases of capital assets are expenditures. But when we look at the fund level, everybody looks at fund balance, which is basically your accumulated reserves over the years. So you went from $18 million last year to $19 million this year, so you're up about $1 million. So that is good there. And your unassigned fund balance, which is the piece that hasn't been kind of broken out for either capital projects or some other designated purpose, went from $6.6 up to $7.4 million, so you're up about $800,000 there. And that's the portion that's allowed or in reserve that the city has to use for whatever purpose it needs to as it's going forward. So all in all, very clean audit, had full cooperation from Keith and his staff, so fairly smoothly. And if anybody has any questions?
I might, if you'll just give me one second. As I thought. You had mentioned that the fund balance for a lot of cities was impacted because of some of the changes in the way that its reporting was. Is that correct?
It was the net position on your government-wide statements.
Do we have any idea what would have... So we're not comparing really apples to apples year over year, or were the changes prior to last year?
Well, you had the two big ones were the pension one, which was four years ago.
Right.
And then the accounting for post-employment benefits.
Right.
Which was the one that went in this year.
Okay.
The pension one was the big one four years ago. The other post-employment benefits, everybody's kind of been picking up a piece of that over the last several years, so the impact wasn't as significant as the pension one a few years ago.
Okay. That's the only question I have. Questions? It's a clean audit, which is really, really nice. I'm trying to think, when I had clean audit in my businesses, but I had one, I think. But I think what this goes to show is that over... And I've seen it since I've been on the council. The improvements in the systems has been phenomenal in the last three years. And that applies also to the budget presentations, which we're about to get into. So I think that Mr. Corddry and his staff certainly have a lot to do with how clean this is, and I applaud them for doing that. And please let your staff know that it's appreciated by the council.
Mr. President, can I just join you for a second?
Sure.
It's not often that we get to applaud our finance team. Actually, Keith kind of makes it difficult because there are multiple occasions a year to applaud our finance team. But normally, I think in government operations, that would be a rarity. I've found myself reading lately about cities like Scranton, Pennsylvania, and Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, and Stockton, California, cities going into bankruptcy, or negotiating the states to avoid bankruptcy, and cities with major structural deficits. This is the second year in a row we've not only had an audit with no findings, but with not a single management comment, nothing. And I think for...
How long have you been here, Keith?
Six years.
Six years. For six years, it has gotten better and better and better. And nobody else deserves credit for that but Keith and his team.
Yep.
So I just want to say, again, incredible job by Keith Cordry, his entire staff, and they are ensuring that every penny that the taxpayers put into the public trust is being cared for exactly as it should.
And I think the other thing to note, I mean, this is significant, you know, for our city, but over the course of the past couple of years with the structural changes of our government, you know, changing departments and, you know, merging departments and eliminating, you know, that we still had no issues during that process. So I mean, you know, we had issues, but what was done, and especially when we had a budget that was, you know, between years, you know, didn't reflect what last year was, but we still came out. The performance of this tremendous.
Right. We made it as difficult as possible.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, you know, I mean, it's very impressive, and I think it's a significant achievement that's been accomplished in this administration. Good job.
Yes. Thank you.
Not that you've set expectations, but we should fly through the budget this year. Now, fly is... It depends on who you talk to, but flying, we expect it, and I'm sure we will. So at this time, I'll call for a motion in a second to accept the audit.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Thank you. Keith?
Excuse me.
I want to entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2855.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Good evening, Ms. Glanz.
Good evening. Great, thank you. You missed out on ice skating. Andy did some interesting moves out there.
I heard.
And no city employee got hurt during the ice skating.
That's what I was most worried about.
I also understand no one's going to qualify for the Olympics.
Not this year, but we have an ice rink now that won't melt, so if we can train all year. So. Resolution Number 2855, a resolution of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the City of Salisbury of certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon northerly corporate limits of the City of Salisbury to be known as Route 13 North, Pentex II property annexation, beginning for the same at a point on the corporate limit. Said point lying on the easternly right-of-way of US 13 North Salisbury Boulevard, fence by and with the northernly line of land of PTVI LLC. Whereas, the City of Salisbury has received a petition to annex dated May 25, 2018, signed by at least 25% of the persons who are resident registered voters and of the persons who are owners of at least 25% of the assessed valuation of the real property in the area sought to be annexed binding upon the northerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as Route 13, Pentex II property annexation, beginning for the same point on the corporate limit. Said point lying on the easternly right-of-way line of US Route 13 North Salisbury Boulevard, by and with the northernly line of the land of PVTI LLC. And whereas, the City of Salisbury has cause to be made a certification of the signatures on said petition for annexation, and has verified that the persons signing the petition represent at least 25% of the persons who are eligible voters and property owners owning 25% of the assessed value of the real property in the area to be annexed, all as of June 19, 2018, and as will more particularly appear by the certification of Leslie C. Sherrill, Surveyor of the City of Salisbury, attached hereto. And whereas, a petition dated May 25, 2018, meets all requirements of the applicable land, whereas, the public hearing is scheduled for January 14, 2019, at 6:00 p.m.
Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, call the motion. All those... Could we switch? Could I... I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Boda. I think I've had it. Sorry.
So all those in favor to approve motion, to approve Resolution Number 2855, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
And Resolution Number 2856, a resolution of the City of Salisbury to adopt an annexation plan for a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the northerly corporate limits of the City of Salisbury to be known as the Route 13 North, Pentex II property annexation, beginning for the same point on the corporate limit. Said point lying on the easternly right-of-way line of US 13 North Salisbury Boulevard, by and with the northernly line of lands PVTI LLC. Whereas, the City of Salisbury is considering the annexation of a parcel of land contiguous to and binding upon the northerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury, beginning for the same point on the corporate limit. Said point lying on the easternly right-of-way line of the US 13 Boulevard, by and with the northernly land of... Line of the land of PVTI LLC, and being more particularly described on Exhibit A, attached hereto and part hereof. And whereas, the City of Salisbury is required to adopt an annexation plan for the proposed area of annexation pursuant to the local government article of the Maryland Antited Code, and whereas, the public hearing is scheduled for January 14, 2019, at 6:00 p.m.
So I entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2856, as read by Ms. Glanz.
To move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2856, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2894.
So moved.
Second.
This one should be a little easier to read. Resolution Number 2894, a resolution of the City of Salisbury accepting donations from the Bless Our Children Campaign for the Santa's Workshop Program and approving such donations to a special-purpose revenue fund. Whereas, the City of Salisbury's Housing and Community Development Department hosts a Santa's Workshop Program every year, and whereas, Bless Our Children wishes to donate funds to help sponsor this annual program, and whereas, the donation of funds will be used to purchase gifts, refreshments, and equipment used to run the program, and whereas, the donations have been received close to the holiday with insufficient time to approve a routine budget amendment, and whereas, these donations are to be used to protect the public welfare by purchasing toys to provide them... To provide children.
All right. Any comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2894, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
I entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2895.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution Number 289... Oh, six? Am I jumping ahead?
289...
Six.
2895.
2895.
2895. This is Toys for Tots.
Right, sorry. I jumped in. We still have the Pearl Street one?
No, this is a second resolution.
Oh, for Toys for Tots.
It's accepting donations of toys from Toys for Tots Campaign.
Sorry about that. Resolution of the City of Salisbury, accepting donation of toys from the Toys for Tots Campaign for the Housing and Community Development Department's annual Santa's Workshop Event. Whereas, the City of Salisbury's Housing and Community Development Department hosts a Santa's Workshop Program every year, and whereas, the Toys for Tots wishes to donate toys to help sponsor this annual event, and whereas, the donation of toys will be used to pass out as Christmas gifts to the children at Santa's Workshop.
Questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolution Number 2895, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2896 to purchase improved real property located at 610 Pearl Street from Rena Ventura for rehabilitation and return to the city tax rolls.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution Number 2896, a resolution of the City of Salisbury to purchase improved real property located at 610 Pearl Street from Rena Ventura for rehabilitation and return to the city's tax rolls. Whereas, the seller of Rena Ventura owns improved residential property located at 610 Pearl Street, which was acquired by D. dated March 23, 2015, and recorded in the Wycomico County, Maryland tax records in Lieber MSB #3831, Folio 459. And whereas, the City of Salisbury is interested in obtaining foreclosed and/or abandoned properties which create a blinding influence on its neighborhoods, so that said properties may be rehabilitated for resale or demolished to make way for new construction. And whereas, the city has an outstanding condemn and demolish order on this property, and whereas, there are outstanding fees owed to the City of Salisbury for grass cutting and sidewalk leaves removal in the amount of $250. And whereas, fiscal year 2019 real estate taxes are outstanding in the amount of $513.17, and whereas, the owner of the property has agreed to sell the property to the city for $15,000 and the city's payment and/or waiver of all outstanding fees and taxes. And whereas, the City of Salisbury desires to waive outstanding fees due to the city, pay the outstanding real estate taxes due on the property, and purchase the property located at 610 Pearl Street to further the city's goal of improving city neighborhoods. And whereas, the attached contract for sale for the purchase of property located at 610 Pearl Street is required to be authorized by the city council prior to signing, which affords protection to the city if issues related to title, property condition, et cetera, cannot be remedied to the city's satisfaction before the city is obligated to complete the purchase.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2896, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2514, which is the second reading, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland Department of Planning for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $50,000.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tillman?
Okay, this is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland Department of Planning for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $50,000, authorizing the mayor to enter into a subrecipient agreement with the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District, Inc., and approving a budget amendment to the FY 2019 Grant Fund to appropriate funds for the 2018 National Folk Festival. Do you... In the second reading, you want me to go through all these whereas clauses, or...
We don't have to. We've already read it once.
All right. So I mean, this basically is, you know, transferring the funds in there to take care of that... What do they call it? It's providing equipment and supplies for the Maryland Traditions Folk Life Area and the Family Area of the 2018 National Folk Festival. It's the transfer of the $50,000 awarded.
Any questions or comments?
No.
All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2514, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2515 for the first reading, which is to approve a budget amendment of the grant fund and general fund to appropriate funds from the United States Department of Homeland Security. This is our SAFER Grant.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the grant fund and general fund to appropriate funds from the United States Department of Homeland Security, Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response SAFER Grants Program for the hiring of additional firefighting personnel to be used by the fire department in the protection and delivery of emergency services to the citizens of the Salisbury Fire District. Whereas, the fire department has the need to hire additional personnel who would enhance operational efficiency and effectiveness, and whereas, the fire department made application for grant funds for this purpose from a program administered by the United States Department of Homeland Security under the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response SAFER Grants Program, designed to provide funding directly to fire departments to help increase the number of trained frontline firefighters available in their communities, and whereas, this grant will assist in offsetting the effects of the current and ongoing economic conditions. And whereas, the fire department has been offered a grant award in the amount of $1,527,738 from the DHS as part of the SAFER Grant Program to be used for the hiring of 12 additional personnel for a period of three years, and whereas, the grant will pay for 75% of the salary and benefits for each of the additional firefighters in the first and second year of the grant, and 35% of the salary and benefits of the third year of the grant. And whereas, the City of Salisbury must agree to the terms of the document in the award package attached as Exhibit A, and whereas, Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter forbids contracts requiring a expenditure in excess of the amounts appropriated for that general classification or expenditure, and forbids any office department or agency from expending funds not appropriated. And whereas, the total amount of the grant funds estimated to be received over three years is $1,527,739, and the grant requires matching funds from the city general fund in the estimated amount of $949,674. And whereas, this amendment is intended to appropriate the first-year grant match amount of $206,451 for fiscal year 2019. And whereas, additional grant matching funds are estimated in the amount of $743,223, and are required to be appropriated by the grant over the following two-year life of the grant. And whereas, the grant issuer requires the return of all grant funds if the required future matching grant funds are not appropriated by the city council, and will therefore be resolved by the city. The City of Salisbury accepts these grant funds in the terms of the award package attached as Exhibit A. The city further agrees to appropriate the necessary funds and expresses its sincere appreciation to the United States Department of Homeland Security, Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grants Program administrators for their recognition of and contribution to the city's efforts to enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of the services provided by the Salisbury Fire Department to the citizens of the city and the Salisbury Fire District. And be it further ordained that the city's grant fund budget and city's fiscal year 2019 general fund budget be and are hereby amended as follows. And that would be that there is... The amounts there are set forth in the chart. I don't see any need to read them. They were stated in the whereas clauses. And with those changes, the funds would then be available.
Any questions or comments?
No.
All those in favor of approving Ordinance Number 2516, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was Ordinance Number 2515. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Chair votes aye. I need a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2516, which is a zoning change to allow a hairdresser shop in the Light Industrial District.
So moved.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury... Oh, did you...
Second.
Oh, I started too fast.
I was slow.
I was slower.
All right, we're good.
Okay, good. So far, my voice is holding up. An ordinance to the City of Salisbury, Maryland pursuant to Chapter 17.228 of Title 17, Zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code in Section 4-203 of the Land Use Article of the Antited Code of Maryland for the purpose of amending Section 17.76.020A to add Hairdresser Shop as a permitted use... shop as a permitted use in the light industrial district. Whereas, the ongoing application administration enforcement of Title seventeen zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates the need for periodic review, evaluation, and amendments that will keep Title seventeen current, and whereas the Maryland City Council may amend Title seventeen zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code pursuant to the authority granted by Maryland Code Land Use Section four dash one oh one, and in accordance with the specific provisions of Chapter seventeen point two-two-eight, amendments and rezoning of Title seventeen zoning, and whereas the Maryland City Council requested that Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission periodically review Title seventeen in light of existing procedural practices and input from the city council and members of the public, and whereas Davis Simpson Holdings submitted an application to amend the text of Chapter seventeen point seven-six, light industrial district, to add hairdresser shop as a permitted use in Section seventeen point seven-six point oh-two-oh-A, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed amendment was held by the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission in accordance with the provisions of seventeen point two-two-eight of Title seventeen of the Salisbury Municipal Code on October eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and whereas the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed text amendment to seventeen point seven-six point oh-two-oh, now therefore being enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the Title seventeen zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code is hereby amended as follows. Section seventeen point seven-six point oh-two-A permitted uses by adding the following item, meaning a hairdresser shop will now be a permitted use in that district. And that also includes barber shops, I checked that.
All right. Any questions or comments?
No.
All those in favor of approving ordinance number two five one six for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two five one seven for first reading, which is a budget amendment to the two thousand and nineteen general fund budget appropriating funds from the Business Development Marketing Fund.
So moved.
Second.
I'll give this one to Hardy.
Okay, this is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY two thousand and nineteen general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Business Development Marketing Fund, whereas the city has sold one thousand two hundred forty-four dollars and forty-four cents worth of merchandise at the downtown Salisbury Visitor Center as of November twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, and whereas the city would like to return those funds to the Downtown Visitor Center Marketing Council on a regular basis to make sure the Visitor Center has a healthy stock of merchandise, and whereas appropriations must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths and council in the City of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, that the city's fiscal year two thousand and nineteen general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows, increase in the account, marketing by one thousand two hundred forty-four dollars and forty-four cents, and a decrease in the city merchandise in an equivalent amount.
Any questions or comments?
Nope.
All those in favor of approving ordinance number two five one seven for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ms. Nichols, no public comments? All right. Well?
Mister Delegate Anderson.
Oh. Delegate Carl Anderton, you have the podium?
Just real quick, I just, just wanted to say, this will be the last meeting that I'll be able to get to until April, with session coming up in just a few weeks. Just wanted to say thank you for the past four years, it's been an awesome experience representing part of Salisbury up in Annapolis, working with you all. We've done some really cool things, highway user revenues, took four tries, but we got it. You know, our wins in the capital budget for the city, for right out, right out here on Main Street, the amphitheater and, and things throughout town, the relationship that we've, we've built with the governor, working with the city on things like National Folk Festival, and, and so I'm very blessed to have the opportunity to do this again, and so I look forward to building on that foundation we've laid. We've laid the foundation, now it's time to build the structure. So I'm just really excited, and, and so in just a few short weeks, you'll be getting texts from me in the middle of the night again, so I hope you'll be looking forward to that. So, don't laugh, you're going to get them too. But again, I just wanted to say thank you, and have a great holiday season, and I'll see you all up in Annapolis, and then...
We'll, we'll be there. We'll be there.
And I'm glad that the sweater I used to be able to wear, you can now fit in, so it's good. You look great, it's an awesome sweater. I'm a little bit jealous, I ain't gonna lie.
It's Christmas time, so we gotta lighten, lighten the room up.
You did, you certainly did. Peach is good to see you. All right, thank you.
All right, well, Mr. Mayor, anything? All right, if we don't see anybody, Merry Christmas to everyone. We will have a work session next Monday night at four-thirty P.M., next Monday afternoon. Also, city offices will be closed on December twenty-fourth, and the next official council meeting will be held on Monday, January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and then, of course, the next, so the next work session will be next Monday, December twelfth, or December seventeenth. I can't read.
Sweater.
Sweater. So with that, we'll see everybody next week. Meeting's adjourned.